Yeah, we're good. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting, Tuesday, June the 10th, 2025. It's 5:00 PM and we are holding our meeting in council chambers in the village of Westport. Calling this meeting to order and we'll proceed with item number two.
We will begin this meeting of the Committee of the Whole by acknowledging that this council chamber at our meeting is on Aboriginal land. That's been inhabited by indigenous people from the beginning. Long before today, as we gather here, there have been Aboriginal people who have been the stewards of this place. In particular, we acknowledge their traditional territory of the Anishna back when that and how to not show me.
Thank you so much, councillor Crapper. Bring us to item number three, which is the adoption of the agenda. It's moved by councillor Card, seconded by councillor Crapper, that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole meeting held on June 10th, 2025 be adopted as presented. Any discussion called a question, all in favor. That's carried takes us to item number four, any declarations of conflict or pecuniary interest. Seeing none brings us to our delegation. So we have John Chris with us from the Dark Sky Project. And John, I'll ask you to come on up to the podium. We were kind of having fun, not on your behalf, but on the topic. And we thought maybe we should turn all the lights out. So it's kind of giving some ambience, but we did decide not to, we're just going. So, and there you go, there's nothing wrong with a bottle of whiskey on this. Turn the lights out, who would see us drinking? So it's over to you, John.
So it all begins with whiskey and I run talk to soldiers of earth. We see two things related to what I'm going to present about why and why the company is investing in this initiative. Two things, we want to preserve our ingredients, water, rain and wood in region that we source locally. And the other is probably into an association to a pristine brand of the vision. And the dark sky certification is a large umbrella strategy for that, the nature of that. Like pristiness and darkness and why and all that stuff. The the brand of the whiskey is made by nature. And we're developing and evolving that brand so that they can make it an export product to places like Japan. You see Canada as natural, pristine, nice and barren trees, water first. Next, so I have to apologize or do I know, I don't have to really. I thought I've been referring to it as the town of Westport and I realized it's the village of Westport. So if I go, if I say anywhere in here town substitute for village.
We don't mind when we hear town. We mind when we hear township.
So what we're trying to do here is a certification called the Westport and Rio Lakes Dark Sky Community. Can you use a level of certification that I'll get into, but. I see it as a beachhead to the larger region and get into that as well. I don't know what I'm doing at all here, I'm learning as I go. And part of that, the call to action that I'm making here is sort of like to understand what is the next step from Westport's point of view. So the thing about dark side is a huge trend right now of tourism. It was even and it's even evolving as we go. So last year when we started this, it was called Astro Turks and now it's called Dark Sky Tourism. So the region in fact has a lot of precedence for this already. If you drive down the 401 near Napanee, there's a sign for the Hennings and Addington Dark Sky Viewing Area. And think of the number of people that drive on the 401 every year if you see that sign. And they think, oh, what's that? What's a dark sky viewing area? So we started this project at a BTC meeting that together in, I think, March last year. And I got a lot of encouragement from Sandy Susan and decided to, and I realized I got a lot of people that can, are supporting this. And pot into supporting this initiative, including Dusty, who also is in Top Shelf. So we launched the NWC and Dark Sky Project. Next, I know we seem meaning near as long. But we were on Javy's block. Part of it is I live near the narrow slot, so I am in this region as a citizen. And I want to have some positive impact on the region. Over that course of that time, so since March last year, we had conversations with way more than just these entities. To try to determine how to go about this strategy. In January, I pitched Rio Lakes Township. And then shortly after it kind of got into the turmoil. So we haven't been able to move things forward there until recently. And then I'm probably going to be able to get more of this conversation than what it did with Rio Lakes Township anyways. Next one, so we're working with an organization called Dark Sky International. They're based in Phoenix, but they're the guy that we're connecting with who's taking us through that process is in Britain. So it's a global organization that certifies. This is New Zealand, but it's constantly certifying regions as dark sky places, preserves, parks, communities. Airports, sport fields, they've got a wide range of activity. And from that partly into press, so National Geographic, Lonely Planet, a far magazine, lots of media attention on this. And probably part of fueling that trend of dark sky turtle. Next, so we had a CDC interview a couple of weeks ago. This is so web radio and TV. And this article had about seventeen, has had about 17,000 or more news. So you get a kind of gauge of the interest in it. It refers to Dusty and myself as astronomers, but we're not. We're quite curious astronomers. But we're what going through all these meetings and communications and meeting people about it. Next slide, realize it's not just tourists coming with telescopes. And that's the common thought of it's about amateur astronomy. It isn't, and someone told me about this, I didn't even know about this glow in the dark paddle boarding and kayak. As an activity is totally an activity for that you do, well, obviously at night, but on a place like here, Westport, you grow or near a slot. Think of campgrounds implementing this, like there's a lot of camp ground implementing something like this activity. So it's a broad range and the next slide sort of goes into some of that. Star using, yeah, but also sleeping is one activity that people seek dark places to do that in. Wilderness migration, birding, it goes on and on paddle boarding. And so the economic impact from that tourism is brought and everybody knows it's lodging and beverage. Interesting thing about it is it is indeed shoulder season. Summer isn't the greatest time for darkness and dark sky viewing because of things like forest fires creating haze in the sky. But also just the time of darkness, so it sun goes down at eight forty five tonight. But in the winter, it's like earlier. And so shoulder, shoulder season, you have more dark. Next, and this is the aspect of registering or certifying, going through that process of this region is it comes with lots of goods. Brand, search engine optimization type of stuff. So you have to go read account and the supply of water. And when I, when I think of that, so I grew up on Victoria as a sailor and taught sailing in the teenager. So a lot of things about water interest me, especially about upper Rio Lake. But it'd be unique as a dark spec community to continue up a real lake in it. Which is important, you mean uniqueness is important when you're talking with media. Yeah, so we're going through dark international, they help us with next. What it is they're trying to achieve. I think of it as three things when it comes to light abatement and liquidation is shading. Time of use and less use. Well, this is a few of them. And then what they provide is templates on, so the next one is a like a shrunk template on what bylaws a municipality would have to implement. The thing is, it's an evolutionary certification that you commit to it. And then each year you're audited that you're improving those bylaws and rules and whatever. It's not something that you have to get in place right away. So you can commit to talking about it first and assessing if that makes sense and how it can be implemented within scope of this community. And yeah, so I'm asking a guess. So I'm not sure what I'm asking, but I'm asking to have some commitment to meet and ascertain the value of it. I can bring a lot more information to table to work with NWC Dark Space Project to, I say potentially, but hopefully. And to implement what's needed by Dark Space International to turn this into a certified dark sky community. Makes sense? And so it's a committee or it's a person that I'm meeting with. Maybe it's an initial commitment of four hours of that time. And we go from there if that makes sense. Get to this, and then I think we can achieve it by early 2026, so maybe March, April timeframe in 2026. I'm using it as a beachhead to understand how to navigate this process. Because I want to take it to the entire Eastern Ontario. So that would be, I think, mid 2027. And it's a, and on the one hand, it's easy because it's R209, it's a tourism economic impact thing, right? So it's R209 and R211 defiance, Eastern Ontario, Minnesota, not Kingston. It's the region in between, but it's still to them very interesting region because it's populated. So it's both 530,000 people in the combined R209 margin. I got a map there, it's not the scale. So I need to see per region and then take it to all of Eastern Ontario to get to, I think it's last slide again. Get to an Eastern Ontario preserve, preserve certification is sort of penultimate goal. The end.
I'm still back at the whiskey bar.
Yeah, so Talk Show wants to expand into this region between Perth and Westport. To our cannabis whiskey, to agents whiskey. But we are growing like next year, we should be producing about a thousand barrels a year. And we need a place to store that.
Oh, I've got some land.
So let's kind of pull this together. First of all, thank you for the presentation for sure. And let's, we have some questions and then we'll have some sort of resolution at the end on how we move forward. Councillor.
Yeah, through you, my mayor. Just per certification, is it more of like an event process? Is it, or is it just open during the shoulder season? Or how would that work to seek certification and obtain that?
So there's two things, so we want to, and we're in the process of launching a dark sky week. And probably two weeks, so next year would be May 22. So it's Friday to Friday in 2026 and we'll probably do, we will do something in September or October. We haven't figured out that week, so shoulder, shoulder. And we're going to do something called Dark Sky Trail. In conjunction with Dark Sky International, but they don't know that yet. So we have dark sky trail.com and think of it like Google Maps, we have layers, terrain, traffic, satellite view. You would have eateries, events, dark sky places, observatories. You'd have different levels where you can find a trail through the region. That's how we were getting awareness. So we actually experimented with that two weeks ago with, went around to different bakeries to eat and got them to do custom made goods that were dark sky. So dark sky cookies from North Oak, dark sky brownies from Bachelor Coffee House in Delta. We did something with furnace balls coffee and dark sky rye from basic leaves and earth. So like there is, it's bizarre that there is a culinary tourism aspect or layer to all of this that draws attention to it. So yeah, two, two different weeks and a trail. There's a long winded answer to your question.
And you know a lot more than us, but what I didn't hear in the presentation is what, why? Why? Because you're not a strong words. So because that's, that's part of what makes sense. So what is sort of the, and you know that your, your video while you give this presentation. So while we're looking for people in our community to ask us questions, they're probably wondering, why would we do this? So what's the benefit, the economic development or tourism benefit to community? Is fairly obvious if you're attracting people that want a dark sky so that they can star watch. Why else?
Where, where is it dark in Eastern Ontario? And knowing where it is, so maybe it's a dark sky preserve or a community and it's still light in Westport. But where in that community is dark? And I want to, I want to book an Airbnb and know that that Airbnb is located somewhere super dark. Because I need it mentally to get away from the city and city lakes and they need to sleep in the darkness.
So there's a drilling, the driver is towards some economic problem.
Necessarily thinking right now.
Yeah.
They are starting to think that. So initially it has, it has a strong aspect to it. And last year we did several events at the narrow slot and a few events at the distillery in Perth to demonstrate the interest in it. I think the first one was awesome and had a couple hundred people come up to it at the narrow slot. Which wasn't good for the narrow slot because it's so narrow, the Smith, but we had them all, multiple telescopes, amateur astronomers there. Light up for that. So someone like Naraslog campground connected with that. And you know, any, any type of activity that they can promote in the region for their tenants or customers is a, is a positive impact for them. So it's, it's a range of things and evolving things. Yeah, so, so for example, there's a person that will, the owner of North Oak Cafe is involved with the glow in the dark paddle awards society.
You added the societal, really.
She created, you were doing this dark sky beach, she said, we can do a regatta or something like a flotilla of. Go in the dark hours at your event when we do it.
Okay.
So the, the organization would run a festival probably and we like the narrow slot. I mean, it's an awesome place to view from, wide open skies, west and east and the water reflects in the stars. When it's a good night, so we're doing something tonight there. It's actually, we, we promoted it, but we weren't sure until yesterday, it was supposed to be cloudy and raining. And then it's turned out as opposed to be clear tonight.
No.
So we're doing it if anyone wants to come by, starting in a little bit, yeah.
Okay, so you've got lots of, you've got lots of questions here as well.
Okay, so.
And I saw all hands go at the same time, so I'm just going to go councillor Aragona Crapper card. Go ahead, John.
So John, I was just wondering, so the ultimate goal is certification as a dark sky region. So ultimately what we're looking for is for Westport to become a dark sky village. And is that something that has to happen for the, like all the time, all year? Has to be a dark sky village or is it?
It's a five year, I think it's a, it's a permanent certification, but you're audited each year.
And I guess my question is, what I'm getting at is, can you do it as, you know, July is dark sky month? Or does it have to be that we are certified as always being dark sky village?
There's a, I mean, a different answer to a different question. I went on a road trip and I ended up in Flagstaff, Arizona. That's the first city ever certified dark sky in 2018. But there's a brewery there called Dark Sky Brewery. So they, they've companies are branding themselves around the concept of dark sky. Do whatever you want. You could say Westport's doing a dark, dark December. And, and someone in COVID could have a dark sky burger. Someone could, could kick off a company and that's dark sky community.com. Right, and, and leverage, leverage off the overall certification, right? But that's a good, I think it's good to see, please, an apple of dark sky, it's called Dark Sky Brewery in Flagstaff, Arizona. Now a little bit like, yeah, we're going to leverage the notion that Flagstaff is a dark spec city and turn it into beer.
Just go up, go ahead. Yeah, so in, in terms of the village becoming a dark sky village. That would require us to change the way we use our own lighting and all that. That was in the report, you'd have to pass by laws as to how light is used as well. Is that ultimately the, the goal?
Yes, in time. Because that doesn't have to be all at once. Moab, Utah is a good example, and it's, I think the, the things they're implementing have to be in place in five years.
Okay.
That's they're telling their population base. Yeah, so it's a, it's in time, but they have to also prove to the population base that is a good thing.
Right.
And, and that's part of the advocacy and education aspect that Thursday project will take on and will take on for.
After seeing you present the first time at the coal, I was interested in the concept of bylaws. And you know, a little bit, so I looked at them and one of the things I can say is that they were pretty new and it isn't. Many, my fear at first hearing about bylaws directed me to say, oh, we're going to have a lot of pushback from people who, you know, have lights in there. And what I've learned is that it is a very incremental and gentle approach to reduce. I mean, Flagstaff, Arizona is a city. And you know, they have bright lights. But tending to shading and the things you can do. What I learned is you can get buy-in because there are benefits to wildlife of reducing light. There are benefits to aquatic plants and, and stuff you don't want growing on your waterfront. If you darken that area, don't have bright lights shining in, it's not like you can have lights. But many people's reaction is like that. So I would, I think, looking at the draft bylaw was kind of eye opening to me because it wasn't. You know, something coming in to be brought into a town to change everything, the way a town worked. I had to stress down in looking at that stuff.
It's, you know, it's, it's, it is interesting to me. I've been aware of it since like eighty one and seeing how it's progressed. It's always been somehow tied to astronomers. Now it's just a tourism thing. And if it has economic impact from tourism. But that underlying that, there's tons of environmental positives that come with it.
Yeah. Councillor. Do you worship? I'm getting the impression it's kind of like a nice old certification where you basically write yourself what, what your goals are. And as long as you maintain the goals that you've written, your certification remains intact.
Yep.
So you, they don't set the rules, you set your own rules.
Yeah.
And through, you know, continuous improvement, you elevate, is that?
Yeah, I'll throw in one more thing. There's evidence of real estate in positive impact on real estate value if it's associated with the dark sky. There's evidence of that in the space, it's, there'll be more of it. I've seen real estate listings that reference that they're near a dark spending year. So it's, they're all in common.
So I, I think, I think we're intrigued. Is that a fair word, we're intrigued? And you know, a couple of the comments that intrigue me as your mayor. They're, the bylaws are not terribly restrictive. That there is a period of time where we can kind of grow into it, see how the public feels. Councillor Card's last comment about you kind of write what, what your goals are and that you meet them. So we probably need staff to bring back a report. And that may mean that staff works with John to bring back the type of thing that we need so that we can. Because I'm, I'm almost a little more than intrigued. I think that it would be if it's doable, but I don't know if it's doable yet. So the motion is with the councillor Crapper, seconded by councillor Card, I'm going to tweak it a bit. The Committee of the Whole received the delegation from John Chriswick regarding the Dark Skies Project. And direct staff to return with a report at September Committee of the Whole. Is that okay with everybody and with mover in the second year and return? What? Word. September, C O W. And so what the report does is they will pick our brain, you know, what are the questions that we have? They're so smart, they already know the types of questions that we would have, they'll bring a report. And you know, if we were going to do something that's getting us in the shoulder season, I'm, I'm intrigued to see if it's something that we can. Who knows? We, you don't shoot, you don't score.
Could I ask one more question? Have you had a chance to speak to two groups? One would be, there's a local tourism group and half the city because Aragona is on that group. I think that would be a great fit.
Here, this dude here.
Yeah, this guy here. Yeah, and I also wonder about, I didn't, don't think I saw that for Rio Lakes Association on there. Have you met with them about?
Probably, no.
Yeah, I think that would be an important.
There's been a lot of overlap. Yeah, it doesn't have to include Rio Lakes township.
You know, John, that's just a point in time.
But if we can motor ahead, all I need is the first, the first mover.
And again, I'm still back at the whiskey bottle. So that, that feels right. Let's get more information from staff. And it may or may not be something, but it's something that we can grow into.
Yeah.
It's also, yeah, I'm going to leave it there. Anybody else want to weigh in on anything, councillor Card, are you happy with this?
Yeah, yeah. You're good.
Good.
Okay, no further question, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you for coming, John, I'm sure to see you soon and again, but so Kim would be in touch with you, your point of contact and yeah. We can do something, it doesn't sound too onerous and it sounds kind of exciting.
Yes, great, thank you, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm not staying for the rest.
Thanks for arranging that. CAO, that was a good question, man. All right, so moving on, it's the rap point or six point one right now. And it's moved by councillor Card, seconded by councillor Crapper. The Committee of the Whole received the minutes from March 26th, 2025 Historical Advisory Committee Meeting as information. Anything you want to add to that?
Sure, just a couple of points to note, there's going to be a bench put over in the grounds of the library on the grass in memory of Don Goodfellow. Yep, so he certainly needs to be recognized, probably in many places in the village, but there'll be a bench there in his honor. There's also been new scale that's been donated recently that's caused a lot of buzz over there. So that's been a lot of really good information and Christine's doing a really good job with the website. At the Rio Lakes website for the museum, Westport, Rio Lakes website, excuse me. And she's just got a lot of really interesting, neat pictures of buildings in the area. So she deserves a pat on the back too, she's doing a great job.
You know, I, a lot of times I don't have time to go on Facebook, but I happened to be on this weekend and I saw how many. And I'm not a local, I mean, you, you, you two would probably look at those buildings and remember them. But even if you're not a local, you can read the people's comments about, you know, my father did this or my uncle's in that photo. And that's my aunt Molly's car. That's very cool. Yeah, it's very cool. We're, I'm from Toronto, I look at the vintage Toronto and you know, means nothing to me, I'm the old TTC streetcars or whatever. So, so that, thank you very much for that. Any questions for councillor Card? Okay, what's the scale?
It was a, an old meat scale that was up at the butcher shop with Merkley's and Robbie Merkley donated it. So you can weigh yourself or weigh your different things.
Oh, oh, okay, very good, thanks for adding it. All right, I'll call a question, then all in favor, carried. Terrific. Item seven point one is administration, the administration, the sponsorship and advertising policy. So it's moved by councillor Crapper, seconded by councillor Card, that the Committee of the Whole receives the report entitled Administration, Sponsorship and Advertising Policy. And that the Committee of the Whole recommend the council approve the sponsorship and advertising policy and direct staff to update the general rates and fees by law accordingly. So a lot of kind of thoughts in, in this, this is our first kick at it. Any comments, concerns, questions? Councillor.
Do you, yeah, I think that we're getting to the point as, as I've often said, we're, it's hard to be a village. We're progressing more towards a different handle. And there is a necessity for rules and regulations and policies so that everything doesn't come to council or everything isn't matched out. That, that our staff can make decisions on the spot and give people quick answers about, you know, their questions. Instead of taking everything back and taking two or three months to work on it. So I think the, the quicker we do something like this, the better out we are.
And give, because there's policy and a procedure there which gives lots of guidance to staff to do just what you said, to kind of make the decisions. And if we, something doesn't work out, we can always revisit the procedure. Anybody else on this, councillor? Anybody else on this, Councilor?
Just quickly, as I read through the policy, I started to understand why it's need, why it's needed. And as we grow, as Councilor Card says, that the potential for needing to assure that uh, what is publicly advertised comprise with some general, I think totally fair and uh, in line with other municipalities. And I did a quick search of other policies in other municipalities, it's very similar stuff, so it's what we need at this time.
Okay, so you're good with it? About the side of the room? No questions? Go ahead, Councilor.
Just add that, I mean, I went through it a couple of times and I it's think that it covers all the bases and it covers all the contingencies. It makes it a lot easier for staff to deal with uh, with everything that's in place.
Yeah.
I was actually looking for holes and I couldn't find any, so like, kudos to the staff.
You, hole seeker, you, okay. You're good?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, well, well done. Then I'll call a question, all in favor. Carried.
Well, here's one I don't know about.
Seven point two is uh, from Public Works, the Emergency Services Community Emergency Response Volunteer Program. It's moved by Councilor Aragona, seconded by Councilor Cardy, that the committee of the whole received a report of the C E M C entitled Public Works Emergency Services Community Emergency Response Volunteer Program. And that the committee of the whole recommend council direct staff to start recruiting for this program in late summer, early fall for a twenty twenty-six kickoff. I'm going to Councilor Card first.
I I think it's a great idea. I think that uh, the village is is rich in uh, experience and and motivated volunteers. The one thing I did like was that uh, you understand right up front that you're not going to be sitting at the head of the table and you're going to be doing the grunt work, but uh, without the grunt work, nothing happens. So uh, I've been in a lot of those deals where somebody needs to take direction and make things happen and and you're always, always, always short of scribes and and people that make things work. Uh, it's it's easy to sit and make a decision, but then when you have to carry it out.
Yeah.
Uh, you can't be making the decision and carrying it out too in in that situation. So the more the more the merrier, I think.
Yeah, the execution needs people to do it, Councilor Cropper and then Councilor Card.
A couple of things, could you remind me, because I think it was early in your time on, you know, as mayor, that there was something similar, there was some an emergency or it had a different title and you just what happened with that? How did it not uh? What what did what lessons did we learn?
Yeah, one of the biggest challenges with setting up a group of volunteers is do you provide enough opportunities for them to engage? And so we had um, five or six volunteers in the village who uh, took a full day course here in in the council chambers. Um. And there was three areas, scribe, setting up. Uh, oh yeah, three areas, being a scribe, um, setting up the um, evacuation center and delivering notices, doing door knocks. And I think it was a matter that we just didn't keep them engaged. Um, so that would be a lesson learned for um, Mr. Monahan for setting this up. Um, but when the emergency hits, I mean, I could think of um, several years ago now, on Councilor Card that the firefighters were out delivering um, oil and water notices. And it just wasn't, it just wasn't a good resource to be using because there was other things then to do. Uh, I could see, um, Brandon, you you want to get in here? I should put your head popping up there.
Your worship, um, I've talked to other C M Cs that have this in place already. Uh, the one's been really helpful. Uh, so this program's already been in place since two thousand and seven for them. And has helped them numerous cases. Uh, so like you said, while water advisories, they went out um, at the big one, has been COVID. Um, so they were helping out at the vaccination sites, um, guiding people, uh, taking their names and registration and stuff, but they said the program's been a huge hit. Um, but the big thing is keeping them engaged. Uh, so they have a set training calendar, so say every month, every uh, two months. They have something going on, something new, they bring in new speakers, new topics. Uh, the big thing is engagement though.
Yeah, 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 that's great.
My, just follow up, I think that that I was actually, because I've done so much of that training, things like WIMSS, you know, they're so great, big. At first, at first glance, you kind of go, ooh, but then in truth, that is the stuff. For the rec, it'll get the right people who want CPR training, who want to learn this stuff and over a period of time will become experts in a whole big, it's very impressive list of uh, training opportunities, so don't be bang on. I mean, as ironic as it is, uh, in some ways that people, that the right people will, well, some people will go, I don't want anything to do with it. Some people, that's exactly the move on. And I like that you're aiming for such a small group. Because you'll get, uh, you know, more likely to sustain that group and they'll go on to uh, form a team, which is pretty special.
And the one special thing that I've seen on the volunteer firefighting side is everyone brings something different to the table, which is nice too. From their background, so it'll be exciting.
Agreed.
Good, thank you. Um, Councilor Cardy and then Councilor Craft.
Sure, I guess it's a sort of follow up to Councilor Cropper in that what if we have a volunteer that is not comfortable with certain aspects of this training? Uh, is it all or nothing sort of um, aspect or deal?
I don't think so. I think we can tailor towards that voluntarily, say if they want to do more than scribe stuff, um, we can tailor towards that person.
It's okay, and Councilor.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, it just came to my mind, thinking back over time, I think the key point for something like this is that when there is an incident, it isn't uh, it isn't a a time to learn everything. It's you you learn it and then you apply it. So there's a there's some continuity in in what happens. So if you had three incidents in a year, the same thing would happen every time and just your your strengths would be directed at a specific uh, part of that. But I think that just to have a group that is trained and knows when they get the call, what they can expect and and you know, what they're going to do, it's not this. It's not every time you get the call, gee, what's going to happen? You know what's going to happen.
Yeah, yeah, good point. Yeah, I'm excited about this. Councilor, are you going to want in here? Okay?
Councilor Card actually said it all.
That's so. Okay, very good. Everybody good then? All right, no call a question, all in favor? Oh, Brandon? That's great. Seven point three is our pre-budget approval ice resurfacer replacement. It's moved by Councilor Cardy, seconded by Councilor Aragona, that the committee of the whole recommends council receive the report entitled Public Works Pre-Budget Approval Ice Resurfacer Replacement. And that the committee of the whole recommends council direct staff to order the replacement ice resurfacer using the canoe procurement contract for delivery and payment in twenty twenty-six at a cost of a hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars, thirty cents plus H S T with a ten percent contingency for options and or installation costs. Okay, I didn't see Councilor Cropper grabbing his chest, so that's good. Councilor.
For you, ma'am, here. Um, my question to Public Works is, uh, why is it important to do this now? Is there a um, is there a availability of an ice resurfacer that we're looking at, or is it that the current one is uh, not going to make it through the season? Just trying to figure out context and timing because we just finished the budget cycle, we're going into another budget cycle. Is this something that can be put off and discussed in context with the next budget conversation?
Go ahead.
So there should be, uh, this is the eleven to thirteen monthly time. So this, the current unit is at its fifteen year mark and spent a fair amount of time in the shop last year. Um, I know uh, recreation commanders put a lot of effort, tried to make sure that there was very minimal disruption to the schedule. Um, we do have it scheduled to work the rest of this season and into next season, and we're hoping to have it for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven uh, season. So that's why now.
Okay, then. All right, Councilor Craft.
Uh, I do see a reference to the greenhouse gas emissions project, which, you know, we're part of and we learned about last time. I thought when he presented, there was a tie indirectly to financing of equipment that would itself directly uh, pertain to greenhouse gas emission. Is there no um, piece of that uh, grant that can be or typically used for an electric?
Go ahead.
So through your worship, uh, so the grant that we currently were successful with did not include the Zamboni. Uh, that wasn't an eligible expense. The other grants we're actively chasing do, and that's why the financing of it is is a little bit still up in the air and it's going to be discussed at budget um, for the twenty twenty-six budget when we arrive, I was actively looking for grants.
And for that reason, as follow up, I think that I fully support the electric uh, as the priority irrespective of additional costs, because I think inevitably that's the kind of um, you know, it's going to have the potential to garner grant support as part of the greenhouse initiative gas reduction.
All right, thank you. Uh, did you go Councilor Card and then Councilor Cardy?
To you, uh, I I think it's a pretty basic decision. Uh, it's like if you don't have a Zamboni working, you don't have any income from the rent. I mean, you're you're dead in the water, so like having your car with an empty gas tank, nothing's going to happen. And it's not like you can run out and borrow a Zamboni, you might be able to bring one in in a couple or three days, but uh, the only time you use a Zamboni is in is in prime season, so uh, you don't want to lose three days' income. The other point I noticed in the briefing note was that uh, an expense of seventy-five hundred dollars a year average for maintenance is, that's pretty steep. So that would contribute immensely toward the actual cost of the unit, so. Uh, it basically, I I think it's it's not a want, it's a necessity, so.
Okay. Councilor Card.
Yeah, through you, your ma- uh, your worship. Um, with this electric ice resurfacer, is it just the Zamboni or is the Olympian um, option two, or is it just the one company that makes the electric?
Go ahead.
The reason, that question I don't have the answer to, the reason why we are looking at Zamboni specifically is it's a community procurement priority. So they've gone out, tendered four resurfacers. And this is the price that we that they negotiate, negotiate. They tended to receive results and we can take advantage of that. So we get to benefit from bulk purchasing across Robins and North America with some of these discents.
And so, everybody good? And just, so when we have talked about um, we had quite a discussion two weeks ago, two meetings ago about, I mean, it was a budget meeting, about um, how we actually do the resurfacing, how do we clean the ice? And we talked about a different system. Is whatever we're going to, would would that system work on the new Zamboni? Go ahead.
Yes, uh, to you, your worship, the, yes, any of those options will be compatible with this unit, so.
Okay.
Still researching and we've had mixed reviews on some of the add-ons. But these add-ons are available for this and available to add at any time. They're both on pieces of kit.
Okay. And so we're looking, okay, I I I hear you. So anybody else want to weigh in? Um, so the, to sum it up from Councilor Card, if you don't have a Zamboni, if you don't have an, I was going to call it a Zamboni, if you don't have a Zamboni, you don't have ice stock. From um, Councilor Cropper, um, that the uh, it's very appealing to look at an electric version of it. Um, and uh, for for Councilor Aragona, uh, the reason it's before us today is there's such a long lead time to get it that um, we hope that the current Zamboni lives through the upcoming season. Um, but can I see in the queue for that?
One more question.
Go ahead.
Uh, to you, your worship. Uh, the contingency, uh, I imagine it covers the the charging unit. Is that what that's for? Your contingency is going to be included in that, or is that part of the uh, original purchase price?
Yes, the provision of the equipment is part of the original purchase price. We assume it was the electrician to do some uh, installation work.
But it would be covered by your contingencies, right?
Yes.
Okay, and had you given any consideration to uh, a spare battery for an electric unit?
No, no, so to your worship, no, I can inquire about that. Um, I don't know what replacement, I don't know the technology as to the replacement, whether it's pouches or cells or how these look, but I can make that question. I'd also.
I have an idea what they look like, but uh, I'm just wondering about if you had, like, the doctors who had tournaments here, if you had, if you were going from uh, uh, say eight o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock at night, and how many, how many floods can you do with the, with one battery without uh, recharge?
So through, uh, the recreation manager did specific questions to a number of ice facilities that have the Zamboni. And the one unit was more than able to keep up. Um, they're the only group that said they had to be a little bit uh, religious about making sure it was plugged into the plus were those that had multiple ice pads. For a single ice pad and a unit of this size, uh, they were very comfortable with the amount of charge that was in one of these units. And the charge time versus the runtime versus the downtime is is actually very much in the village's favor now, and even if we do see some moderate growth.
Okay, okay. Anybody else? All right, then I'll call a question, all in favor, and that's carried. Thank you, Peter. Uh, seven point four is uh, from Public Works again, the Stormwater Master Plan. And we've got to swirl this around that this issue in the council chambers and and staff felt that it was time to put forward a report on uh, what stormwater, uh, what a stormwater master plan would, uh, the conception of it and what it would cost. Uh, so the motion is moved by Councilor Aragona, seconded by Councilor Cardy, that the committee of the whole received the report entitled Stormwater Master Plan for information purposes. Uh, so let's open it up for discussion, comments, concerns, Councilor Card.
I looked at the numbers and they're pretty scary. Uh, I did a little bit of research, uh, and this is back in the day, I've used Queen's University's Engineering Services section for different duties at the time, air quality and whatever, but I see that that some of the universities do, uh, uh, there's actually one, I think, uh, doing a stormwater study right now for uh, a city west of here. And I'm just wondering if there's, if there's uh, any possibility there that the service they provide uh, would qualify as as serving our needs and uh, I know that the the universities themselves can receive funding to help with some of these studies. So I'm just wondering if that's something that might be worth looking at when we're looking at three hundred and fifty to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Uh, you you mean to see if the university would take on
Take on project.
our stormwater
Yeah.
master plan. Want to go back to what the options were that there? Um, so who else had their hand up? I'm sorry, is that distracted? Councilor Cropper, go ahead.
I'm still on the options. Uh, I think, well, I'll start off by saying this is a topic that we have been asked a number of times by other organizations to undertake and by Rita Lakes Township at one point two. Sometimes in a way that was uh, that felt like, you know, the lake water problems were the fault of the village. And now the village is saying, well, we we will, we understand that, under uh, understanding our stormwater management future. But I also, I like uh, option number five that suggests that there is something in it for other, other municipalities and other groups like Earlup. And so I would really strongly recommend to the extent possible that this be viewed, uh, that we present it as something that's not just a benefit to our village or ratepayers, taxpayers, but a huge benefit to all uh, who call this area home and to look for partnerships in funding it. I agree that the cost is high, the benefit's huge. Uh, figured out how to wade through that, uh, those differences or or the challenge. I do like the funding ideas. I mean, it's a great kick at the can by staff to suggest how, you know, what different taxation models or sharing of the but I really think that this isn't something that only the taxpayers of the village of Westport uh, have a stake in. And so we need to figure out how it is a cost shared by others.
Mm-hmm. Um, Councilor Aragona and then Councilor Cardy.
So I'm through you, ma'am, yeah. Um, so I I was looking at the cost and then uh, after I let go of my chest. I I was wondering, is there a way, uh, perhaps to, I I know you you outlined, Peter, in the in the brief that the it it needs to be done in phases. Is the way, is there a way to cost it out for phase? And structure it so that it is done in that way, or is it that once you start it, you have to complete it within a certain timeline?
Yeah, yeah, that's a really good question, because I I got stuck at pha- phase one as well, because you don't know what you don't know as of today. So uh, had you not asked that, I would be asking, do we have a sense of if we I'm just going to put on the table, if we only need phase one in twenty-five, twenty-six, and what would be, is that possible? Is that Councilor Aragona's question? And can we get a sense of what that would cost?
So through your worship, uh, council, the short answer is it absolutely can be phased in. Uh, some of the uh, the position of the village finds itself in right now is we know very little uh, quantitative data about the stormwater network. Uh, we inspect at a surface level, we find and replace it as we do street constructions, both Spring Street and Bedford Street have stormwater components. Uh, unfortunately, the rest of the network is largely on map. Uh, unfortunately, the rest of the network is largely unmarked, uninspected. And so the general condition of it is unknown.
Yeah.
Um, when we have a failure, we find and fix or find and replace the failure. Um, we know we need to study the system and gather a lot of quantitative data before we can even start a report. So as far as phasing an approach, absolutely. Um, that's part of why that, that large number, it was going to take three to five years, regardless of whether council had a funding source day one, just because of the amount of time and effort it's going to take to gather that data. So in relation to the question, the first initial gap data gathering is some of the most expensive. So we look at, uh, areas around us that did similar work. Uh, one of the benefits we have is, um, some of the changes around the, uh, DCAs for consolidated infrastructure. Um, there's a mandate to do a lot of inspections of pipes around wellheads. So the village is actually in great position there in the sense that we own a camera and can complete most of those tasks. Other, uh, municipalities in the area are not in such a good spot. So they're putting out, um, requests for proposals for similar work that we would need to do here in the stormwater. And that's why the numbers that are coming back are just, are very, very high.
I see.
So we've actually caught up by a number of neighboring municipalities, uh, three specifically, to review our inspection equipment. So to, and see that that's an option for them as well. So the first phase being the data gathering is some of the most expensive, uh, should council wish to proceed with the project of this.
But did I hear you say that because we have a camera system? I, I heard you say that the comps are difficult because we have a camera system that makes it, um, more, uh, uh, cheaper for us to do it. Less expensive for us to do it here. Did, did I hear you right?
I would agree with you. It can for sure. Uh, it's the quantitative analysis that is also important. Um, and we make sure we can do it and run through a lot of our smaller pipes and systems and that. So that is factored in. Um, but even if we were to include staff time, it's going to be a very expensive endeavor.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump on your question, but you have the same question I did about phase one. Please go ahead.
Just follow up through, um, yeah. So I'm wondering if there maybe there's a way to, uh, break this out into phases as we just discussed, but also combine perhaps, uh, Counselor Card's suggestion of bringing in a university. Maybe a university could help with phase one, which is the, uh, the assessment of finding out what we don't know. Uh, combine it with what we already own, our own camera. And maybe that reduces that, the cost. I'm, I'm just asking a question. Is, is that, is that doable? Is that possible?
Yeah, go, go ahead. And if you don't know, you need time, that's fine, but, but you can see there is an interest for us to, even if it's incrementally, start moving forward on this. So don't want to put you on the spot if you don't know the answer.
Yeah, so I'm aware generally of those, uh, projects that have gone that way. Um, a lot of this work is field and data gathering. I think there's sometimes more, uh, reporting and analysis that we can tap into on the nearest level. I don't know the programs. I can reach out to some of the, um, area programs that have similar lines. I wouldn't be able to guarantee anything, of course, but.
Okay. Uh, I lost track of, uh, Counselor Cardy for sure.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Um, just, uh, when we were talking about the stormwater rates, um, the number four, it talks anywhere from five to twenty dollars could be an option. Um, would that just be for the three to five years or would that be an ongoing, uh, rate that our taxpayers would have to pay?
And so three worship, the, I would expect that that would end up becoming an ongoing event. The reason why is, uh, I can guarantee that whatever report is generated, should council wish to proceed with this stormwater master plan, there's going to be significant amount of work that immediately follow behind.
Yeah.
So I don't expect that they're going to find that they have no recommendations for significant capital works, which means that funding source would likely be continued, uh, should it be an option for the village.
Yeah. Yeah. Because there's a lot of nothing, right? Which needs capital. Yeah. Counselor Crapper, you want in?
Another thought to put into the mix is we, we've been talking a lot about the ten-year growth projections in our village. And, uh, you know, there's a lot of, I mean, for stormwater improvements through that growth that you shared with us last time. Is there some potential for partnership with developers, uh, to look at how the, uh, the costs of this are shared as part of growth? Is that been explored at all? Is it seem like, uh, something viable in terms of it's in, it's in the benefit of our, uh, it's, we're good, we're growing at stormwater, therefore it's something that's being invested in by developers now. Will that pertain to the plan?
So the question, I guess the question is, could that be explored as we haven't made a decision? Go ahead.
So there, um, so that is done now, and part of the D C study did have an allowance for growth-related studies. Uh, this would be a shared, of course, report as the developers have to complete their own studies around stormwater, make sure that they're not adversely implicated or adversely affecting downstream. Um, so the short answer is yes, the longer answers is still going to be a, a large chunk of both. That's going to be a percentage.
Yes, yeah. Go ahead.
Through you, ma'am, yeah. Uh, I have a wild card question and we, we're, we're surrounded by, uh, other municipalities that have roads that, that, uh, also, um, manage stormwater in some way or another. Is this, is it possible that, uh, we could, uh, partner with another municipality to do something like this in one of the phases, maybe the assessment phase or the, uh, analysis phase?
Sure. Go ahead.
So there's, uh, a couple of municipalities have indicated that they would be interested in this study. Uh, they didn't tie any funding to that interest, but, um, I do see there being a potential for, uh, partnership. Uh, example, the United Counties of Grenville has stormwater infrastructure within the village. Perhaps that information will be valuable enough to them to, uh, help fund. Um, if the contractors come in and inspect ten kilometers of lines and two of those kilometers are within the United Counties of Grenville, that's a, there's a scale, the scale of adding a couple of kilometers and partnering, but I couldn't, of course, be for them at all.
So it seems like, thanks for all that information. Great questions, team. Um, so let's just talk about what does the next step look like? Um, is the next step, uh, staff looking to see if there is potential for other organizations, other governments to work with us? Or is the next step for, um, staff to hone in a little bit more on phase one? Uh, and what that looks like. And I got the head nod that you think maybe we do a little bit more, made on the bones for phase one. And then once we feel comfortable with what that looks like, then we look for partners. Is that, go ahead.
Yes, so, yeah, I would say that that makes, that makes a lot of sense is to, to look at this as phase one, uh, to begin with. But I'd like to see if we, maybe staff can look at the creative ways that we've been discussing about, uh, you know, whether there's any university that we could get involved, whether the United County could get involved, uh, some, some way to sort of make this more financially palatable, if it makes sense.
Yeah, okay. I had none, Counselor Crapper?
And just for the information, I recall that it was the University of Guelph that was actually do, helping a, a, a city or a, a town up that way. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, and I just Googled it, so it's not hard to find. Uh, a couple of other questions. Are we putting the cart before the horse, uh, if we don't investigate possibilities of, uh, if, are we just going to look at what impacts the village? Are we going to look at what impacts the G W A, uh, when we do this study? So if we go ahead on our own and, and do a study before we find out if we have a partner, is that going to impact it? Uh, what, what we actually do, uh, the second step? Uh, if, would we be stepping on our own toes there or?
I think that, um, I, I, I think that the wisdom around the table is let's figure out what we need first. And it won't be rigid, but at least we'll have an idea of what the scope is that we're prepared to undertake and then go to the, um, uh, the other agencies. That feels, that feels, does feel right to me. We're, it, not, this is going to be definitive, but then staff can come back to us and say, you know, this is what we found out as it relates to Westport. Um, and then see whether the township wants to be involved or, or the counties. I, I, I think that's most comfortable for us because we don't control the others. We do control.
Follow up for
Yeah, please go ahead.
Peter, uh, they don't pump, uh, stormwater. They don't, it's just gravity. It's always dependent on gravity. You don't pump stormwater, do you?
In the village here?
Anywhere.
No, many places pump stormwater. It's, uh, very expensive endeavor, but, um, I, I wouldn't expect the village to. Um, but it's, uh,
Looking at the top topography here, I mean, uh, everything up in the, uh, in the subdivision is higher ground. So anything going any other way, it, it heads for the pond or it heads for the rito. So I think we have a, we have a unique situation here where it's going to be more complicated than most places to, to make it work. I was just wondering about whether you could, you know, get rid of it in some other, other fashion or not.
Did you say, sorry, I don't think I heard your answer. Some places do pump it?
Yes.
Was it affirmative? Okay. Um, okay, so it feels right. So the motion is, uh, receive the report entitled Stormwater Master Plan and, um, bring a report back to Committee of the Whole. I'm just looking for some direction here. November?
Yeah, I was going to say.
November. I got a nod from Peter. Okay. And that's okay with Counselors Aragona and Cardy to change your motion then? So the motion is, is, uh, to receive the report and for staff to return with, uh, additional information and report in November. Okay, call the question all in favor? Yeah, well done, guys. Well done, team. So that's our list of resolutions. Briefcase notes, I should say. Um, item number eight is notice of motion. Seeing none, announcements? It has one little, it's not really an announcement, but I really want to compliment, uh, the team here, uh, including staff. Um, you know, we, we, we push through a lot of things for, we punch above our weight, I think the expression is, for, uh, uh, a municipality of our size. The amount of work that, that we push through here and it comes to us from staff. They've taken the time to do the research and the reports. And, um, Counselor Crapper and I were in another meeting this morning and we got talking about civility and the need for civility and, and, uh, I want to specifically talk to members of council that despite the fact that we come at these things often with different opinions, different backgrounds, different experiences, I really want you to know what a, an intense pleasure it is, um, sitting here in the horseshoe with you that we, we tend to reach most of our decisions by consensus. We, we, um, uh, and nobody, uh, wants to steal the whole discussion so that I have to get involved. You know, we go around the table and if, if you want to speak three or four times because someone's tweaked you, we, we let that happen. And, uh, and I think many of us have started at one point in a discussion and then by the end of the discussion we go, all right, well, I heard what's this counselor said and that counselor said, and we changed it. It, you know, a- as we move through our careers, we have different expectations. And, and I know one of mine is that, you know, I will only, um, be involved in environments where it's civil and it's respectful and it can be robust disagreements, but they still need to be respectful. So I just want to take that one moment with the four of you to, um, we know that's not everywhere. And, uh, a- and when we hear about, pardon me, other, other, um, council chambers where that's not the case, it's hard to, it's hard to imagine sitting there week after week where, um, there's so much disharmony. So pat yourselves on the back, team, because you model that behavior. And when it comes time to look for people to run for council in two thousand and twenty-six, they're going to look at you. They're not going to look at some of the other councils where things may not go as amiably, certainly not with the civility that you model. And, and so I, I think that you are the biggest recruiters for people to run for council and how you deal with things. That's going to comment and thank you very much. Uh, any questions from the public? Any questions from the media?
Um, one quick question about stormwater and that's just simply, um, so it's, what I hear you saying is that there's a lot that we don't know. We need to spend some years, um, trying to figure out what towards, working towards a master plan that resolution of some degree would be implemented after that kind of twenty, thirty mark. So in the meantime, do we have an idea?
Can I stop you just there? Sure. I don't think what you said is what we've said.
No?
What we've said is we'd like to have some work started on it now.
Right.
And, and so we don't know what the end date is. We don't, we don't know what we don't know. That's a fair quote.
Okay.
And so we're going to start gathering that information. And some of that information is when we look at what, how phase one was described in loose terms. Um, can staff come back with a more in-depth report on phase one in November of this year?
Okay. And so that, that's actually a good segue into a question. Um, do we know, um, do we know which areas in the village are the most affected now by flooding? Like in recent history, do we have a sense of who has the most jeopardy as we work towards a resolution?
I, I, I think we could say, could say anecdotally, we've got examples, but we want the data. So everybody in the village can think of two or three places, you know, that we, we've all kind of experienced seeing it happen, but we want more data than that. So I'm not playing with words with you. Just, we all, we all have a couple of houses that we've seen some issues on. Um, but let's do it in, let's get some more information on how much more in-depth we can go. It's a big project. There's no doubt about it for an old, old village like ours that, um, probably at one time had ditches. And as everything's leveled out, even my place, you know, would have had some substantial ditches when you look at the old photos. But they've, 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 well, the ditch has gone down or the ground's gone down or something's raised up. So I'm just very proud of this team that despite the significant cost, uh, they are being bold and saying, let's start the process and find out what we need to know.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Um, okay, so we're, we're adjourned, folks. Uh, so the motion is moved by Counselor Cardy, seconded by Counselor Aragona. The, the June tenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Committee of the Whole be adjourned at six oh seven P M. All in favor? And that's Carrie.